Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough. I am going to move some things around. I thought I would move the the action items to allow Mr. Wilcox, but it doesn't sound like he's able to come on, so we'll just leave those where they're at. I will go into my president's report, just because I'm thinking maybe there may be some public comment that my, my, my president's report may answer some questions for for those who are in public comment, potentially. So for the president's Did someone say something?
That was you, it was feedback.
Oh, is that better now? Okay, so I forwarded for president's report, I forwarded an email to you all, board members from Judy Sklerstein, from McPherson and Jacobson, which includes some, some information as to what to expect. And also I attached the agenda for the meeting on Wednesday. The committee meeting will be, it's a committee meeting that the public can view. It'll be posted on our artistic website with the Zoom link and the meeting is scheduled from three to six P M. And I'll also be working with Eric Schultz in the next few days in I T to dedicate a space on our website for the superintendent's search content, so that fully it's easy to find and everything will be sort of posted there. Okay. And so we'll move on to public participation, Dr. Joyner and Dr. White.
I'm ready when you are, Dr. White. I've set the timer up. You have three minutes to speak. Comment on agenda items. Our first speaker is Ashley Stockton. You may begin.
Good evening. Last month, we lost Ms. Hazel Pappas. I first met Ms. Pappas about twelve years ago at an in-person Board of Ed meeting. Over the years, I had the pleasure of talking with Ms. Pappas before and after board meetings. Through our neighborly conversations, I learned that she had a grandson who attended the school where I taught, and we enjoyed this connection. I would not have known Ms. Pappas if we had been denied the opportunity to attend these public meetings. Thankfully, past leaders did not prohibit us from meeting publicly, getting to know one another and building community. By refusing to hold in-person public meetings, the current leadership is denying citizens the opportunity to gather and fully participate. You have disabled the Zoom function that allows us to even see how many people are attending each meeting. Meeting remotely assumes that all members of the public have access to consistently working technology. During the January ninth meeting, I lost my internet connection and was unable to view the meeting on Zoom or YouTube. Thus, I could not attend the meeting. President Rivera and Mayor Ellicker have said that remote meetings have resulted in increased attendance. Yet no comparative data has been provided to support these claims. At a two thousand nineteen event with city teachers, then mayoral candidate Ellicker stated, quote, "The mayor has a lot of power over this system," end quote. If elected mayor, he said he would, quote, "Encourage meaningful parent involvement with the school board so that parents don't have to rely on Facebook Live videos" "posted by parent education activists in order to know what is being said and decided upon at Board of Ed meetings," end quote. Last week, the New Haven Independent quoted the mayor as saying, quote, "In-person communication is always helpful and important. It doesn't necessarily need to happen at a Board of Education formal meeting. There are always other opportunities." "I've tried to make myself available personally as mayor for in-person opportunities to engage, whether it's have a beer with the mayor, have coffee with the mayor sessions," end quote. So which is it? Should the public have to rely on videos of meetings or not? Personally, I want to attend the public meetings in the city where I live and pay taxes, not have a beer with the mayor in order to engage civically. Finally, I hope you will consider the implications of meeting remotely. For five months, this board is charged with hiring a superintendent. Excluding the community from public meetings and processes will most likely create unnecessary obstacles for a new superintendent. Due to the isolated remote functioning of this board, it is inevitable that there will be mistrust. How could there not be? Members of this board will not even sit in the same room with engaged members of the public. It's questionable and strange, and it's also a barrier to civic engagement, transparency in the process. I'm gonna finish my thought. Please don't be surprised if down the line, the new superintendent chosen by you finds himself facing issues with parents, students, and employees that could have been prevented had this board welcomed members of the community you represent into the room where decisions about our children and schools are being made. It's not too late to change course. I hope you will resume in-person meetings immediately. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Erin Mashad.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Erin Mashad, and I'm a teacher at Beecher Museum Magnet School and a member of the New Haven LGBTQ Youth Task Force. I'm speaking in support of Matt Wilcox, who is up for reappointment to the New Haven Public School, Public Schools Board of Education this evening. Matt doesn't participate or get drawn into political agenda or some of the more confrontational moments of this board. He maintains an even voice regarding action items and proposals and has the best intentions for the New Haven community. He's an active member of the New Haven LGBTQ Youth Task Force, attending every meeting, offering support and resources, and is continually advocating for students in this high-risk category. He was instrumental in initiating the task, the task force collaboration with the Board of Ed to pass policy fifty-one forty-five, also known as the transgender and gender non-conforming youth policy, which was emotionally and unanimously approved by this board in November twenty twenty-one. It was a very proud moment for myself, a dedicated queer and H P S teacher. Astonishingly and disappointingly, in my twenty-three years as a proud New Haven educator, the district has been publicly silent on LGBTQ identities and issues until very recently. I applaud the board for their recent efforts to create a safe learning environment for all students, in particular for the approval of gender-affirming policies. All students must feel safe in all of our schools, and I hope N H P S can continue to grow and become a model of acceptance and love of all children. Mr. Wilcox is dedicated to that cause. Mr. Wilcox cares about N H P S students. And not only is he instrumental in helping to pass protective measures, he's continuously pushing the Board of Ed to follow up on past proposals, pushing for data on change and for complete Board of Ed and N H P S transparency. He is an asset to our community, he's an asset to the City of New Haven, and he's an asset to the N H P S Board of Education. I fully support Matt Wilcox's reappointment, and I hope Mayor Ellicker, you will as well. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Kirsten. Please state your full name. You may begin.
Hello. Good evening. This is Kirsten Hopps McFadden. Can you all hear me? I haven't spoken to you all in a while. Happy New Year. It's lovely to see you all. I, you know, I'm an attorney. I don't really tell people that. A lot of people who know me know that. So usually, like, if there's an issue and I want to find out, I try to find a legal reason for it. And so I'm gonna talk about that in a second. I too knew Ms. Pappas. I knew Ms. Pappas because I worked with her my first year at Clemente, and that's why I kind of, kind of met her as an adult. And then come to find out, my mother knew her since she came to New Haven because she said she'd been going to Board of Education meetings for that long. And she was wonderful, and I loved seeing her at every board meeting, and I do regret that in the past couple of years, we were not able to see her because the board meetings were remote. And I miss her, and I give honor to her, her memory. So, I was wondering where this law came from. You know, why are you all allowed to continue to, to remain remote? So I looked on, I Googled it, and I found it at the Shipman and Goodwin School Law site or something, whatever. And so I'm gonna read it to you. This is under the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act. Public agencies, including Boards of Educations, must make their meetings, other than executive sessions, open to the public. Last year, the Connecticut Legislature passed a law allowing public agencies under, until April thirty of two thousand two, twenty-two, to hold public meetings that are accessible to the public through electronic equipment or through electronic equipment in conjunction with an in-person meeting. Last Thursday, government Lamont signed, and this is important, public, signed into law House Bill five-two-six-nine as amended by House Schedule A. The new law removes the April thirty of two thousand twenty-two sunset date and allows public agencies to continue to hold remote and hybrid, hybrid meetings as long as they comply with the requirements under existing law. The bill also explicitly provides that regional school districts may hold remote, hybrid public meetings to present a proposed budget in the same way as other public agencies. And then it goes on a little bit further, and I could send this to you all. But what I want to let the public know, that if you're upset about this, and because the Board of Education is not listening to us, we might need to contact our state legislators and Governor Lamont and have them repeal House Bill five-two-six-nine. At least change it to say that we need to have hybrid meetings or in-person meetings. Did you say time, Dr. Joyner? Because I didn't hear you, because I'm talking.
Yes.
So, again. Okay, I want to send. Thank you, Dr. Joyner. I want to finish that, and I want to say to remember, this is what the bill is called. House Bill five-two-six-nine. Contact your state legislators, contact Governor Lamont, and tell him he needs to repeal that. So we can be in person, because I would love to see all of you. I miss you all so much. Bye-bye.
Our next speaker. Before you start, Dr. White, I just want to clarify something. The rules are that when I say time, you can complete your sentence. I'm not trying to cut anybody off. But we do have everybody is subject to the same time constraints, three minutes per speech. So when I say time, please finish your sentence. Our next speaker is David Weintraub.
Good evening. My name is Dave Weintraub. I live at fifty-one Perkins Street in Fairhaven. I serve as the Magnet Resource Teacher at Elm Stadium Montessori School, a founding member of the City of New Haven LGBTQ Youth Task Force. And I'm here tonight in support of Board Member Matt Wilcox. Matt Wilcox, as Erin mentioned before me, has been a champion for LGBTQ students across New Haven, as have many members of this board. As a core consistent member of the City of New Haven LGBTQ Task Force, that has been a constant advocate for implementation of the life-saving trans policy and other district initiatives that safeguard LGBTQ youth. In December, this board had the privilege and opportunity to listen and learn more about the results that came through the Panorama surveys last year. To advocate for initiatives such as training for all staff, updates to our outdated health curriculum, and the G S A establishments at all middle schools. I was not surprised to read that Matt has perfect attendance at Board of Ed meetings, because he also does for the task force meetings. Matt asks questions, speaks boldly, follows up and follows through. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes the attendees' hands. I'm going to move over to Board Member hands now. But for the public, because it has been stated twice, testimony in favor or against Mr. Wilcox should go to the Board of Alders, which is meeting this evening as well. So just, just that for the public knowledge. Mr. Goldson, you may speak.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. Welcome. Just for your information, well, first of all, Ms. Pappas, I know, I've known Ms. Pappas since I was a young type running around Louisville with a runny nose and, and and ripped up sneakers, and she was always involved in the school system. And I'm sorry to hear that she passed. I'm even more sorry that I didn't hear it until a while after she passed. Because we just don't get to see each other anymore, because we're not having these public meetings that she came to, every meeting. I'd just like to talk about the lack of transparency at this, at this Board of Ed. If we're not being transparent with our board members, we're certainly not being transparent with the public. As I, I've said at all of these past meetings, I requested several months ago a score sheet for your approved cleaning contract. Have not received that yet. I asked, I requested, and then did a F O I request for emails between Board Members and our Communications Director related to discussions around me and other people in the community. Have yet to receive those after several months. I have not received, as requested, a briefing on Brennan Rogers' school transfers, school that's actually in my ward and in the district that I was elected to. I've, I've yet to receive a briefing and other information on that that I requested. I'm also, again, as I've done previously, requesting that we meet in public, hybrid, however this board decides to do it, but we should have a public-facing meeting where folks can see who else is there, have communications with each other as opposed to just seeing us on a screen. There are currently, I guess, fifty-eight people in this meeting, twenty-two panelists, thirty-six attendees, most of which are are, are staff to the, to the organizations. And the reason why the public's not attending anymore is because they can't actually sit and talk to each other and organize and, and discuss amongst themselves, as well as us, these issues around this Board of Ed, these Board of Ed issues. So I hope that we will reverse that decision sooner rather than later. Thank you very much.
That concludes all hands now, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner and Dr. White. Dr. Joyner, you have your hand raised.
Yes, Madam Chair. Point of personal privilege.
Go ahead.
I'd like to say something about Mrs. Pappas. Who, who I actually identified as spiritual canon. And I can't talk about the late Hazel Pappas without talking about the living Florence Caldwell. Because they were both were hand in hand and among the most passionate advocates for the children in the New Haven public school systems. I got a chance to know Mrs. Pappas, visited her home, she visited my home. We would go out to eat, and a lot of you may not realize that Pappas is a Greek name. And that Mrs. Papp, Mrs. Pappas was a truly open-minded person. Because when she got married in Detroit, she married a Greek. And I got a chance to meet her children and her grandchildren. And she would not allow any man-made law to keep her from being the kind of person that she deemed the Creator wanted her to be. And that is to love all people and to be a passionate advocate for justice. In some ways, there are multiple versions of Rosa Parks and Harriet Tubman and all these great women, Valo Leuzi, who have stood tall against disadvantage, oppression, and injustice. And the late Hazel Pappas is certainly a person in that pantheon of women of all ethnicities and gender orientations. Along with the living Florence Caldwell. And I say that because we need to show people like that. And I count some of the women who are in the screen that I'm looking at right now. How we feel about them. Whether they are young women like Viviana Connor and Keisha Redhannans or women who have gotten a bit older but still look young, like Abby Benitez and Eileen Tracy. It, it, it's kind of easy to talk about people when they're no longer around. But there's an old saying in our community that says, "Give me my flowers when I can smell them." And so I feel good that I was able to tell Mrs. Pappas, and I'm gonna tell him Florence now if she's listening, how much I love and appreciate your advocacy for children and for the disadvantaged. If we feel as good as people are saying about Mrs. Pappas, then we'll do something in her memory to keep her memory alive. You know, when people talk about Dr. King, some of the very people who were critical of Dr. King were the first ones to show up at celebrations in his honor. If you study enough history, whether it's secular or biblical, you can see that many great people are only appreciated when they're no longer visible or audible. And I hope that we don't let that happen to Mrs. Pappas. I'd be the first one to make a contribution to any effort, particularly if it's directed toward children, to keep her memory alive. And I'm hoping that the naming committee will consider her for something as well as some of all the people that have lived in this city and have contributed above and beyond the call of duty. There's a beautiful quote that says, "We should be afraid to die unless we have won at least one victory for humanity." And Hazel Pappas' first victories were won for her own children, because she raised some great, great children. And then beyond that, she worked tirelessly to help kids and families that needed it. And she certainly didn't miss any board meetings. But she was also very cognizant that there is a serious pandemic that's still going on. And anyone who believes that we're in a post-COVID period is not paying attention to the truth about that matter. So I, again, applaud her long life, her long service, as well as her alliance with someone who's still alive and well and still trying to make a difference, Mrs. Caldwell. Because I don't think you can talk about Lone Ranger without talking about Tonto. You can't talk about Cisco without talking about his partner. You can't talk about Dr. King without talking about Ralph Abernathy. And you can't talk about Batman without talking about Robin. So you certainly can't talk about Hazel Pappas without talking about Florence Caldwell. And Florence Caldwell is alive and well. So God bless Mrs. Pappas. May she rest in peace. And God bless all the women who are alive and well now, who are trying to make a difference despite critics and adversity. Because that certainly is the way that Mrs. Pappas lived her life. I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Okay, we're moving on to the action items. Approval of board meeting minutes for January ninth. There are motion, motion to approve.
That's Google talking issue.
So moved.
Is that you, Mayor Ellicker?
Yeah, I lose my voice a little bit, but so moved.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Presented by Dr. Joyner. Any discussion? Okay, seen none. We'll vote to approve the meeting minutes for January ninth. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Goldson?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Ms. Roman?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and so that motion carries. Personnel report, Dr. Tracy?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, board, and members of the community who are watching and listening. Sorry about that. Thanks. Let me first thank my team for keeping things going in my absence. Thank you so much, all my team members. I also want to comment a little bit before I give my report on Miss Pappas. Her celebration of life was one of the most beautiful things I've seen with the participation of her children. Mayor Ellicker, Gemma and I were at the funeral. I call it a celebration. And it was just peaceful and very rich occasion. And all the people who attended that celebration for Miss Pappas. Unfortunately, I was to reach out to her, and by the time I get around to it, Florence texted me that she had passed. And so those are the two individuals that have impacted my life somehow here in New Haven Public School. So I just wanted to say that. Without anything further, I'm asking the board to accept the action items that I have. This time, we have nine new hires, two retirements, and four resignations. And so I'm asking the board to accept the personnel report passes. Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the action items of the personnel report?
Motion to accept, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Any discussion? Mr. Goldson?
Thank you, Madam President. Just like to note for the record, some good news on the blue sheets this week, or green sheets, I guess they are. There is more teachers that were hired than actually left the system, so that was a net plus, so I'm happy to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldson. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll vote to pass the action items of the personnel report. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes.
Mr. Goldson?
Yes.
Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Ms. Roman?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, and so that motion carries. Next item, discussing impossible action, M O A Local three-four-two-nine C B A. Dr. Tracy?
Thank you, Gemma, Madam President. So this memorandum of agreement, we've been working for quite a while to with, at least, the power union. And I've been trying to come up with this memorandum of understanding to share with the board. So you know that we have the challenge with the teacher shortages, and we have many of our professionals who have been covering classes long-term outside of their regular contract arrangement, where we pay people five dollars per day, they do cover other classes. But many of these have taken on the responsibility of providing more long-term coverage for a teacher who may be an F M L A or a vacancy. And so we felt it was necessary to reward them for the work that they're doing. And the request was made to pay them, rather than the forty-five in their contract, a hundred dollars. These are only those who are serving in long-term capacities. We pay them a hundred dollars and to have that retroactive to, I think, September of this year. And so I have this in front of you right now. And Mr. Goldson had asked for an estimation. I told him I would try, but I didn't think I would have it for. I told my would try, but I didn't think I would have it for this evening, and I still don't. Was a very busy day for me coming back after illness. So I ask the board accept this memorandum of understanding or agreement on behalf of the power union.
I move the item?
Your motion, yeah.
A second?
Johnson, second. Thank you, any discussion? Mr. Goldson?
Thank you, Madam President, I am disappointed that, um, again, we are making, um, we have to make decisions without knowing the full fiscal impact. Um, to this organization, but um, everyone knows I am a full supporter of our underpaid. Um, and overused, um, parent professionals, um, so um, I urge support of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Goldson, Dr. Joyner?
Madam Chair, I also move supportive of this item, uh, unfortunately because of human resource deficits. We haven't had the staff uh, around us to even do some of the operational and budgetary work and understand that. But this is so important, and quite frankly, I believe this might be the first in a number of changes. That might take place across the country if we are to preserve. And 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 uh, be able to recruit people to work in the education profession. So I strongly endorse this and hope that we can even procure more resources to create the best working environment. For the people that serve our children and families.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll go on the N Y U Local three, four, two, nine. Uh, Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Goldson?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Ms. Roman?
Yes.
Mayor Alker?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and that motion carries. Next item is the discuss and discussion impossible action of the Elm City Montessori Charter renewal. Dr. Tracy for?
Uh, I'll begin that I am admitting, uh, Julia Webb, Eliza Halsey. And Shadé, I am missing your name.
No, no, no.
Shadé. Uh, Ms. Webb.
Do you have a question or a comment, Dr. Joyner?
No, I was gonna motion to, to approve the charter renewal, but I'll wait until you take it.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's do the motions before we go into discussion, sorry about that.
Okay. Madam, Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I move to approve the uh, renewal of Elm City Montessori Charter renewal. And when given opportunity, I will state my reasons why.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any discussion, please proceed.
Madam Chair? Uh, I've spent, um, I've, I've spent quite a bit of time in, in the school. Um, I know some of the families there. I'm also, I've also known the principal for since she was in high school. And one of the good things about this charter is that it has a, in my opinion. A very collaborative and friendly relationship with New Haven Public Schools. Uh, it does not see itself as a appendage a- apart from, from us. Julia Webb is a New Haven educated leader. Uh, her family has, has for multiple generations have, have supported the school district, and she was really built for this. Uh, they do a great job, um, with, with the students. Uh, I got a chance to sit in on classes, uh, and even to purchase some material for, for one of the young fellows. That I met there that had a special interest. Uh, it's a parent-friendly, student-friendly school in the Montessori tradition. And I think it's a great uh, addition to the portfolio of schools that we have here in New Haven.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner, Dr. Tracy, Mr. Goldson? Dr. Tracy, did you lower your hand or?
No, I just wanted to share the results. Uh, no, I put it up for, there were one hundred eighty-two respondents to the question, should the charter be renewed? One hundred seventy-nine of one hundred eighty-two voted in the affirmative that they would like to see the charter. This is among stakeholders of the school, parents, students, staff that did vote.
Thank you, Dr. White, Mr. Goldson? You're muted, you're muted.
I just wanted to second Dr. Joyner's comments. Uh, I, from what I hear, um, they're doing a terrific job over there. And um, I look forward to seeing them continue to educate our, our students and, and, and the quality, the high quality that they're doing, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldson. Mr. Cruz Bustamante, and then Mayor Alker?
Hey y'all, so also reading Dr. Tracy's letter. It mentions here that the per pupil tuition rate was thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Resulting in a payment for four million one hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and seventy dollars from New Haven Public Schools to Elm City Montessori. And that we don't get any additional revenue from the state to support this partnership. Um, I love Elm City Montessori, I know a lot of great people there. So my question is, how does this affect public school students? The students that are already in our system under New Haven Public, under New Haven Board of Education rules?
Okay.
So. Oh, thanks for that question, Mr. Bustamante. So it is, it only raises an equity issue, but it is one of New Haven's um, first public charter. We still believe that the state is the, a land for renewing there, I must say that on point, renewing their um, charter. But we're thinking that the state should be doing more and sending funds our way to help support this great work. Cause I've been to the school and I really love the work that I see happening um, in the school when I visit the school. But we're saying that the state should do something about helping to fund this great endeavor that's happening here in, in New Haven Public Schools. This was um, the brainchild of former superintendent Garth Harris. Um, that New Haven should have its, oh, its own public charter. It even confused the state and lives in both side, confused the state as we work through whose responsibility this, whose responsibility that. But I must say, they're doing a great job at the school and um, they're still New Haven based on the charter arrangement. They're not like M, they're not like um, Elm City, my, Elm City, not Elm City. Elm City Prep or other churches who they are all local churches. But they also have a certain level of autonomy, of the charter.
Thank you, Dr. Tracy, Mayor Alker?
Uh, thanks, just see if I can speak here, I'm losing my voice. I, but I just wanted to echo in a different way, um, the comments that uh, some of my colleagues have made. Uh, I know a lot of people that attend uh, Elm City Montessori. And uh, and was touched by a lot of the testimony that we were listening to uh, earlier this evening. Uh, particularly by the young students. Um, you're doing excellent work, you clearly make a, a very solid effort to be part of the community that you serve. Uh, and I'm uh, very excited to help support you continuing that work tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Alker, Mr. Goldson. Dr. Joyner, can you take over the um, the meeting for one minute? My husband locked himself out of the house.
That's wrong, that's just wrong. Okay, uh, Mr. Goldson?
I'll be right back.
As a husband, as a husband, I, I do, I do not appreciate that comment, but um.
Sorry, I didn't do it, he did.
Oh, thank, thank you, Madam President, um. Uh, just uh, for uh, my colleague, uh, Mr. Cruz Bustamante. Um, these are um, New Haven students. Um, their demographics um, closely reflect the demographic, demographics of um, our school system here. Um, the um, the um, the per pupil cost matches. Um, the per pupil, pupil cost um, for our students. And um, if those students were in that school, they would be in our school system. Uh, we still would be paying for them, uh, we would just be paying for them um, through a different, to a different entity, um. You know, they're still be in one of our schools. So at the end of the day, it's not taking away, uh, I, I don't see it as taking away from um, our school system. And I like the idea of having, quite frankly, I like the idea of having um, local um, community folks. Um, involved in managing on that system, uh, that school. Um, and I, I really think um, because of the results that we've seen from that school, I think we should have more of them. But I think we should look at um, diversify our portfolio here. So that more um, so that more community folks have an opportunity to serve um, the students of the, this school system. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Goldson, Dr. Joyner, and then Dr. Yarborough?
That, that, there's a little history here, uh, years ago. When Albert Shanker and others proposed charter schools, they proposed them as part, in, in partnerships and within the scope of public education. And they would be schools that would do uh, well-controlled experiments and export those results when they were successful to the larger school system. And the only school in the entire city that's doing that is, is, is Julia Webb's school. And by the way, she's a graduate of Wilbur Cross High School if I got it right. And um, that will be your alma mater soon, uh, Mr. Cruz Bustamante. And all her, all of her kids are, as Mr. Goldson indicated, New Haven Public School kids. They're not from Bridgeport or Norwalk or any place, they're not bustin', they're, they're New Haven kids. The other beautiful thing about it is that I, I know the specific case of a kid that came to the school with, with a lot of challenges. And instead of trying to send him back to the public school system. Uh, that child is still there and thriving, and his parents and grandparents testified to that. So Julia's doing a great job, um, she has, has a great group of people around her. And uh, we need to take a look at what she's doing and we need to learn from each other. So uh, like everybody on this board, I am ecstatic about the renewal. And I'm certain that they're gonna continue to do greater and greater things as time goes on.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner, Dr. Yarborough?
Thank you, yes, um, I will affirm my support for the school, uh, based on the comments that have been made. Um, and when it's actually time to vote, I will abstain because of a board relationship with an early childhood education. That shares uh, property, shares a building uh, with Elm City Montessori. So I, I don't know what's proper in terms of what to do, um, but I, I'll abstain for bony. But I don't want that to convey uh, my lack of support. I want to affirm my support for Elm City and its leadership and its student body and teachers and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough. Um, I will just briefly say that I had the opportunity to visit over the summer, to visit the school and walk around and talk to the staff. And um, it was a really nice visit, I really liked how they ran the school and how the kids were so excited to, to be doing their, their work. And their different projects, I, I wish more of our New Haven Public Schools had that same sort of model. Um, so I will be supporting um, Elm City Charter Renewal as well, thank you.
Madam Chair, point of affirmation.
Sure.
It, it doesn't appear to me that there's a conflict between Dr. Yarborough being associated with a person that shares the space. And his voting on that particular school uh, to be renewed, I don't know if any other board member feels that way. But I don't, I don't see a conflict in that. He doesn't have any.
I'm not sure, I'll defer to Attorney Alexiatis if he can give us a little info.
He needs to turn on his.
Yeah, there you go, I think so.
I, I can't really opine on that, I don't have, I don't know enough of the uh, of the factual background with regard to uh. Uh, Dr. Yarborough's relationships, um, and you know, I don't, uh. I don't wanna take everyone's time right now, nor uh, should that inquiry, you know. I mean, that's the conversation I can have with Dr. Yarborough after the meeting, but um, I really don't know enough to, to, to opine on it.
Thank you, Attorney Alexiatis, Dr. Tracy, and then Dr. Yarborough?
So like you said, there is no conflict here, it's like I have this building and I rent out a part to somebody else. It has nothing to do with my building, my program and my running, I just, they rent, the other groups, that there is renters in their space. The building belongs to Elm City and they're renting, so there's no conflict of interest with their programs or anything, it's two different entities.
Thank you, Dr. Tracy, Dr. Yarborough?
Yes, thank you, I was uh, just explaining what Dr. Tracy said. Um, this early childhood school who uh, are renters in the space of Elm City Montessori. Uh, and were gracious for, for being there, um, and so that's the relationship, uh, so it's, it's a professional one, um, it's a positive one. And uh, yeah, so thank you for everyone's generosity and guidance.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough, Mr. Goldson?
I, I would, I would defer to Dr. Yar, Yarborough's um, feelings on this issue. But I would say that if his organization wasn't receiving preferential um, rents, um, rental rate. Then I, I, I would say he was okay. If he was re, if he was re, receiving some kind of rate that was different from or lower than other organizations. Then I would have a concern about um, about voting because then it would look like it might be a quick pro quo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we'll move on to voting on the Elm City Montessori Charter Renewal. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Now I was supposed to decide, I, I abstain, because I don't know the rates.
Got it, Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Goldson?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Ms. Roman?
Yes.
Mayor Alker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, and so that motion carries. Next item are the second readings, Dr. Benitez? But that, hold, hold on, Dr. Benitez, Dr. White, you brought on Sade, Sean Jox. Um, Mr. Mandia and Julia Webb, is it for?
Uh, they were brought into.
They're.
They were brought in to speak, uh, if present if necessary, but it is no longer necessary, they'll be put back into the audience.
Got it, okay, thank you, I wasn't sure. Okay, and we'll move on to the second readings, Dr. Benitez?
Yes, um, we are um, moving on the second reading for. And would like to be voted uh, tonight for um, policy five, one, one, two, five, one, three, one. Five, one, three, one, point, seven, and seven, five, five, one. I know um, that people may have discussion around these items. But I would like a motion uh, to approve these. And, and then um, a discussion.
Dr. Joyner?
Motion to approve the item.
Point, point of order, Madam President?
Mr. Goldson?
Can we move these items separately, um, please?
Sure. Sure. Sure, okay. Dr. Joyner, will you move them s- one at a time?
Yes, uh, motion to approve uh the second reading of governor's policy five one one two. Age of attendance.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. We'll vote on policy five one one two. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Galton?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Ms. Roman? Is she still here?
She has. She has her, she's muted.
Muted. One more time, Ms. Roman? I'll skip her. Mayor Alaker?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and so that motion carries. Next is the. Dr. Joyner?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the bus conduct policy five one three one point seven. As written.
Five one three one point seven. Okay. There are second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Dr. Joyner?
Uh, the reason I motion to approve this is because of the legal. Information that's provided with it, uh, my experience as, as, as a person in charge of the buses when I was in high school. And we do have to regulate the conduct of students on buses. Uh, to do otherwise invites disaster. Uh, both in terms of anything that could happen between students on the bus.
Point of order?
Anything that.
Point, point of order, Madam President?
Mr. Galton?
Um, I think Dr. Joyner moved the weapons and dangerous instruments um, um, item as opposed to the bus conduct item.
There's two.
He said five one three one seven, right?
Yes, we're, we're on five one three one seven right at the moment.
Which is weapons.
Weapons and dangerous instruments, you're right.
Right.
All right.
Oh, you're right, I'm moving five one three one, thank you, Mr. Wilson, I'm moving five one three one point one, is that correct?
Well, we're on point seven at the moment, that's the one that you moved first and it was second.
On the policy.
We can do that one first and then go back to point one.
Okay, yes.
Okay, okay. Did you have, did you have a comment on five one three one point seven?
Yeah, I did, but I thought we passed. We passed.
We. We did five one one two.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, right, right, okay, so let me back up. We're, we're on bus conduct policy, am I correct?
No.
It is.
Weapons and dangerous.
It is, it is part of bus conduct, but the, the point seven is specific to dangerous weapons.
Okay, uh, well, I'm gonna withdraw my, my first comment, let someone who's probably more coherent than I am right now.
Ma- Madam President, I have a point of order on this one also.
Sure.
Um, there is a three, three one point seven A and three one point seven B. Are we moving both of those items together?
I don't.
What's that?
I don't see point seven B on the.
Point seven B is the second page that talks about additional optional language to consider?
They're both there, yes, Mr. Galton.
Yeah, so we're moving five one, five one three one point seven A and B.
And B, yes, correct. Correct.
Um, I would support um the moving um A and B. Um. Moving the additional language, and so I just want to make sure that that's what we're moving, that we are. Uh, I just wanted to make, uh, I just have one question. Um, when we talk about dangerous weapons, we're not talking about toys that look like dangerous weapons? As long as they don't fire projectiles?
The, the what?
So if, if a child, if a child brings in a plastic toy that looks like a gun.
Or toys.
Right, a toy that looks like a gun, would that be considered a dangerous weapon?
No.
By, by this definition, it would not be, I just want to make sure that that's.
No. I don't think that's listed here anywhere.
Okay. Alright, only if it, only if it, if it fires projectiles that could harm or kill.
Like a. Or if it's an instrument, it could be an instrument that doesn't fire projectiles, but that is.
Right.
Yeah, it, it also includes material or substance, so it, anything that could potentially endanger the life. Of a child, or, or another person.
So let me ask you another question, um, what if a, if a six-year-old um got into their dad's trunk of his car? And saw a flare? And, and put a flare in his bookbag and brought it into school? That could be considered a dangerous weapon, would that child be expelled for bringing that, that item to the school?
That's uh, I believe that's a dangerous weapon.
Um, Mr. Alexiades, would you consider that, um, would the school system consider that um a dangerous weapon on, from your legal standpoint? I mean, cause kids go into their parents' stuff and take out stuff all the time.
It would, I'm, I'm guessing it would, same thing as going into their drawer and pulling out the gun and bringing it to school, no?
Well, it doesn't fire.
We, we have. Mr. Galton, would you mind if Ms. Jackson clarifies?
Oh, whoever you want to do it, ma-
Doubts?
However you want to do it, Dr. Benitez.
Yes.
So, so I was gonna, oh, sorry.
Ms. Jackson?
Sorry about that, so, so Mr. Galton, it would, um, it would meet the standard, however, given the age, and I'm just sharing this because we have had some students that have come in. With things that have been um considered weapons in exactly the scenario that you mentioned. Um, certainly in those cases, we have not expelled students, we have looked at trying to provide them. Uh, with some additional support, so I think those are some circumstances above and beyond um really the standard. Uh, of a weapon where we're looking and considering those other circumstances and other variables such as age, so just, again, we've had some circumstances with children bringing in. Uh, weapons by way of definition and making sure that if we're looking at age and the circumstances that we're making these exceptions as, as needed.
Alright, then, then I have two follow-ups to that. One is the reason why I raise this example is because in here, it defines destructive device and it says. It does not include, which is primarily designed for use as signaling pyrotechnic line throwing, safety, or similar device. So, and that's why I brought up the flare example, uh, cause I could, I could see a kid seeing a bright red stick. Um, in, in his father's trunk and say, hey, that's, that's pretty, I'm gonna bring it to school and show it to my friends. He may not even know what it does, probably doesn't even know what it does, could be, could be six, could be twelve, it may not even know what it does. So, um, your, your policy here says that that item would not be included in, as a destructive device. Um, but more than that, I don't see language in here, and maybe I'm missing it, I don't see language in here where it gives you the leeway. To say, we're not going to suspend the child because of their age or other circumstances. Is that in here and I'm just missing it?
Every effort will be made, um. Every effort will be made by the district to provide wraparound support for students as determined by student return response teams. Or overall mitigating circumstances may be taken into consideration by the administration, that's what that means, Mr. Galton. That, that we will look into things. Uh, thoroughly and, and we will look at the mitigating circumstances of children. When they are engaged in this type of behavior.
Why couldn't we just say that language then, make it real clear? That the administration has the ability to be able to make those kind of decisions based on mitigating circumstances.
It, it says it right here.
It's, it's there.
Maybe taken into consideration.
The last line, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, thank you very much. Alright, there, therefore, I um, I absolutely support um, um, item um. Five one three one seven A and B.
Thank you, Mr. Galton, um, Ms. Mason, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, I am not seeing the, the B for that, so I just need some clarification on. Um, the motion as it relates to A and B, because I'm not on the agenda, I'm not seeing the B.
Could I, could I, could I amend the, could I, Madam President, point where, could I amend the motion? Um, to add, um, section B?
The, the B is in the handout, it's not, it's not actually on the agenda, but it's there in the handout.
Hold on, Alexiades has his hand up, let me, let me let him weigh in.
So, it is on. Uh, B is on uh page, let me see, page one thirty-nine of the other materials posted online. Um, but, and my question as it relates to uh. Our reporting uh secretary's uh question is, did the motion include, in, include B?
Yes.
Because I think that you, what, what you are proposing, it sounds like what you're proposing to do is adopt uh subse- subsection A, but including the language that's in B.
Right.
So the motion should make that, should make that clear that you're working on both A, A and B. I think that it's covered under the agenda discussion of, of subsection A, combined with the posting of both, of both materials, so I don't think. You need to amend the agenda, you could, I don't think you need to, um, but you should be clear about what you're doing, that's all.
Madam President, I have a workaround, point of order? Based on, based on Mr. Alexiades's um discussion, I would amend the item to add the. Um, additional optional language um to the motion. So it would just be an A, it wouldn't be an A or B in our, in our, um, in our documentation, at the end of the day, it would just be five one three one. Point seven A, and it would be, oh no, wouldn't, wouldn't you have to have A, I guess? It would just have the additional optional language to consider. And I don't know if I have to read all of this language right now, but we could certainly get it to the um recording secretary.
Mm-hmm.
So I move, I move that.
I would, I, I would just suggest that if this is the way the model rules are labeled with the A and B. Um, for clarity, you should. Uh, I'd probably, might, probably uh stick with the way they're labeled, um, not, not that I'm. I don't want to contradict Mr. Galton, but, but just, it's probably better if you stick with the way they're labeled and say that you're adopting both A and B.
Right. Right, so, so Mr. Galton, if you can, if you want, and you may, um. Amend that motion to, to read five one three one point seven A and B, it's exact, it, it is the same document, it just. Adds additional language, but I don't think that we need to say that if we say A and B.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Galton?
I understand what Dr. Benitez is saying, but Mr. Alexiades brought up an issue about, um, because it wasn't on the official. Agenda, we would eat, we could either just amend the item to add this additional language. Or we, or we'd have to amend the agenda to add section B, which we don't want to do.
I think what he, I think what he said, well, we can just name it A and B when we make the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I've confused.
Isn't that right?
But I will make the motion, um, I will make the motion to amend the item. Um, to add section B, um, additional optional language. To the um, to, to the uh policy, and I won't read the language here, but it's, but it's posted, I don't need to read the language here, is that correct? Alright, so, but it's posted, and um, I guess I would have to have a second for that amendment.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, so we're voting on amending. The original motion to include um, five one three one. Point seven A and B and the additional language.
Alright, Madam Chair, I had my hand up for discussion, but it'll be brief.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I think it's really important while we're doing this, to, to help the public understand how difficult it is. When a young child uh does something like this.
Ho- hold on, Dr. Joyner, let's just amend the motion first, then we'll go into discussion.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Galton?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Ms. Roman? Is she? No longer with us. Doc Mayor Alaker?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and so that item carries, and now we can go back to the. Discussion on the, on the motion. Ms. Mason, you have a question?
Uh, yes, what is the language for B, for, for, for the record?
Someone can send it to her.
It's the attachment. And the uh, in the materials. And the son of weapons and dangerous instruments continued, additional optional language to consider. So someone should.
Could Ms. Jackson send it to her?
Ms. Jackson?
Whoever sent out the document in the first place should be the one to send it to.
She's not here.
Yeah, well, yeah, she could, she could, we could get it to her.
Ms. Mason, it, it is uh posted on. On the last board, a complete um, written.
Yep, I can send it, I'm sorry, I was having a hard time. I, I can send it, I was having a hard time on muting it, so I will send it.
Okay.
Um, to you when I stop driving, I was sending it, yep.
Thank you, Ms. Mason.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Dr. Joyner?
Okay, so one of the things that we, we need to. Put in, in the record in this meeting is the difficulty of dealing with this when the child is very young. And uh, not of an age to have a clear sense of what he or she is doing when they take a shiny item or. As Mr. Galton indicated, uh, an item that, that they're curious about and bring it to school. And so a six-year-old child. Uh, in terms of intentions, it's very hard to, to prove that this child is sitting down and plotting to bring a weapon to school to hurt somebody. So, so, so the, the past practice in this has been just what Dr. Benitez and Ms. Jackson has said. That they consider the child's background, history, family situation, and make a decision based on that. In terms of how to help the child. Now, that's important because of what happened in Newport News at the elementary school that I'm very privy to, because my niece works there. That particular child was actually coming to, the parent, the family was coming to school with the child every day. Now, how, how the gun got there is, is difficult, because they searched his bag and they found nothing. So in this case, this child is going to be getting as much support. Uh, and his family is gonna get as, get as much support as they can muster to try to help this, this very young child. Who had serious problems to begin with. But now we're talking about, and Tiffany can probably say that better than I can, putting that child in the least restrictive environment. Uh, which becomes. A probability when you see multiple situation where a child has put himself or his peers in jeopardy. And so this is really a hard one. And i- if, if you're a layman, you may not understand all the back stuff that has to happen. But it is a very, very real problem in schools and a growing problem in schools. And, and ultimately, you, you're trying to protect the child's future and protect the peers around the child. Uh, so that, that you can eliminate or curtail incidents like this.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Okay, seeing no further discussion, then we'll go to approve policy five one three one point seven A and B. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Galton?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Roman's still not here, Mayor Alaker?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and so that motion carries. So we'll move on to, we'll go back to five one three one point one, Dr. Joyner.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that alone, let somebody else handle it.
I'll move it.
Mr. Goldson?
Um. Second.
I'm assuming that we're moving five, one, three, one, one, point one, A?
And B.
And B?
Yes.
So, so there's three different.
And what happens is they, they numbered that A and B because it's two pages, and that we don't want anybody not to know that there is another page.
Okay, so, okay, so I'm, I'm moving five, one, three, one, point one, which includes, um, page A, which includes page point one, point one A and point one B.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough, Mr. Goldson, any discussion?
Yeah, yes, Madam President, um.
Mr. Goldson?
I, I just have one suggestion, I, I was a little concerned, well, there's three things that I was concerned about. On, um, page, on page one, point one, it says, "School transportation is a student privilege conditional upon satisfactory behavior on buses and, and at bus stops." It's not a privilege, it's actually a, um, state mandated, um, um, it's, it's, I, I'm sorry, it's, it's actually state mandated, so, um, so I would take out privilege, conditional, I, I would take out the word privilege.
The, the reason why we put privilege is because the state says shall and not must, so we are making sure that students understand that they must, uh, that they, that their behavior and their actions in the school buses, uh, will be taken into consideration, uh, and, 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 you know, and we will be making sure that we're not taking away transportation that a child does not need to lose, but that they must understand that we shall and not must, and they will have to, and, and again, this is a matter of making sure that we, uh, clearly state for families and for students and for staff, that they all need to work together in order to make buses a very safe environment. Uh, to take into consideration that we have forty-eight kids in a bus with one adult is, is something that we all need to take very seriously. But I understand your concern, which is everybody's concern. I, uh, again, we want to make sure that any student suspended, um, from the, from bus services will have, um, will have to have violated the rules many times, but the thing is, we want to make sure that everybody understands that the language does not say must, it's not a right, it's a privilege. And when you have a privilege, when you have a privilege, you have to treat it with care. That's what that word is in there for.
I, I understand the importance of, of having, um, of having good conduct on buses, obviously. Like you said, forty-eight kids, one adult, um, that's important. But let me ask, let me ask you a follow-up question to that then. If a student, um, especially a, a very small student, is suspended from bus service and they don't have any other way to get to school, uh, what is our responsibility? Um, what, what is the responsibility of the school system? Because my understanding is that, from reading some of the state statutes, that we have to provide um, educational services to students. So if we stop their ability to be able to ride the bus to school, do we have another responsibility now to get them other transportation or to bring school to them?
That's a good question for Ms. Jackson. No, I, I'm very clear, I, I, I'm telling you, I would have called her even as the principal.
Oh, no, 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 I'm laughing on that one, but, um, so what I would say is this, there have been times, uh, you know, again, when, when children are off the, the vehicles, uh, typically, we're not seeing children being off the vehicles for a long period of time. Um, we don't always recommend this, but in some cases, there are some children where we do look at alternative uh, transportation, there are some children who require, and this is specifically, you know, I'm looking at students with disabilities in a, a different category, but sometimes we are looking at alternate transportation for some students if they are not able to ride the bus. But it's been my experience that when we are doing this, we are working with the families, and it's not a long-range plan, um, that we are working with them enough to be able to get them, uh, back onto the vehicle. So to answer your question, um, more broadly, yes, in some cases, we are looking at, and we have provided alternate transportation, and in others, again, if we are doing this, you know, we're working with the families enough to be able to get the students in, and it's not a long-range, uh, plan. We haven't seen, uh, children being, uh, off of buses for a long, uh, period of time.
Thank you very much for that answer. My second question was about power granted to bus drivers on, uh, at, on point one A. On point one, that says the driver is in complete charge of the bus and the children being transfer, transported. The driver make, check, make, may make changes in seating, arrange, and then it says arrange for discipline as required. And that's a little confusing, because it sounds like the driver is actually determining discipline for the students, when I understand that that is only something that the administration could do.
Yes.
So arrange for, go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
No, I was gonna say, go ahead, Dr. Benitez, I was just gonna say to Mr. Gold, Goldson, if you look a little bit further, I'm driving, so I can't pull it up in front of me, but we added some language, just to your point, um, that the, uh, drivers are working in conjunction with administration about making those, um, changes. Again, having the transportation or drivers involved, obviously, they're, you know, having the information about what's going on in the bus, but that it wouldn't be the sole responsibility, if you see, moving down a little bit further, they're working in conjunction with the administration.
Can I, can I, can I ask you this question? Would it be simpler just to replace, um, that, um, that, that, um, that language that says, um, arrange for discipline, to change it to report to the administration for discipline? That way it's clear that the driver is not responsible for determining whether a, a child rides the bus or not, but it's the administration that does it?
Oh, oh, no, that does not mean that, Mr. Goldson.
It could be, it could be misinterpreted for that. When you say arrange for discipline, uh, a, a, a bus driver or a school bus, um, company may see that as their, as their responsibility to determine what the, I mean, they could say, I'm not letting you on the bus anymore, and they think that that's the word, right? Um, so, I, I mean, to make it clear for everybody, including the parents and the students and everyone else, would it be simple just to replace arrange for, what was it again? Arrange for discipline or just replace that report to the administration for discipline? That way it's clear.
I, I think that's not a big deal, and we should, we could do that. I, I mean, if other people agree with me, I'm, I'm just, uh, bringing this to you.
Could I, uh? Well, I, I would like to make that motion to do that, if there's support around that. It's, it's just a simple language change, and, um, if, if, if no one has any problem with that, I'd like to, um, no one has major problem with it, I'd like to make that suggestion.
Mr. Goldson?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I might respond to that, um, the language, quite frankly, is fine as written, and, and I'll explain to you why. The, the part about the driver being in complete charge of the bus actually deals with what a driver may have to do immediately on a bus en route to the school or away from the school to take the kid back home. And that's an extension of loco parentis, that is, the adult that has charge of the kids and have this, and they have the same authority that a parent, a reasonable parent would have in that case. Now, the policy is, is a large enveloping set of language, and then there are administrative procedures that follow that. And what you're not seeing are the administrative procedures.
Point, 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 point of order, um, Dr. Joyner? I, 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 I will withdraw my, my comments about changing that wording. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not important enough to, to go half an hour about it, so I, I, I.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So I decided I'm, I'm good. So good, I, I have one more point, can I raise my third point, please? Is that okay? Is that okay, Dr. Joyner?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, my third point is, um, due process. Uh, I don't see in this context where it discusses, um, due process. Um, my understanding is this policy is, is for students and, and, and parents to see. Um, so, um, if we could add some language around due process, so that parents and students know what their rights are, uh, because a bus driver has his back to the students, he may hear, may think he heard something from one student that may have come from another student, and that, that student doesn't have the opportunity to defend themselves, um, or their, their parent doesn't have an opportunity to defend them, um, well, they actually do, but it doesn't outline in this policy that they do. So can we add some language to this around due process?
Due process, if, if you don't mind, is, is covers any kind of disciplinary action between a student and the school. So it's, it's overarching process, where a student may be accused of something or whatever, and, and whether it's on a bus, at a football game, or whatever. So that's the overarching process that all students are entitled to, uh, whenever there is a question of discipline.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Joyner.
I will, again, I, I will defer, uh, I'm not gonna make a big deal of it. Um, I just, I, I'd like to be real clear, um, so that parents are real clear about what their rights are. Um, but I'll, again, I'm not gonna carry this on for half an hour, so, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. All right, so seeing no further discussions, we will vote on policy five, one, three, one, point one, A and B. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
What, what about a president?
Mr. Goldson?
Actually, it's, it's, um, point one, point one A and point one B. There's three different pages, three different pages.
Point one A and point one B.
No, it's point one, point one A and point one B, right?
It's five, one, three, one, point one A and five, one, three, one, point one B.
But you have three, you have three different, I, I'm sorry, we have three different pages here that have three different, this one is one policy. This is point one, and then the second one is point one A, and then the third one is point one B. They're all, point one A, point one A and point one B are actually the same policy.
It is the same policy, just that number thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen of the policy are on pay, on the page labeled B, and also the general statutes that refer to what we are saying. That's, that's what they, that's why they label it A and B, as I said before. It's the same policy, just that it has more than one page. If we had three pages, it will be B and C, A, B, and C, see what I, that's how they do it.
But, but we do, we, we do have three pages. We have three pages.
We were talking about that, yes. I think this is because when, when they are sending it through email, but originally, it was on, um, no, really, originally, it was only two pages. I, I am seeing that here.
Ma- Madam President, Dr. Benitez, there is point one, which then has legal references to it. Then it has one A and one A B, I mean, and one B, which has, which is a separate, um, document that has legal references to it. So these are two different.
No, I, I think you might be looking at something else. If you look at five, one, three, one, point one A, it starts with students' bus conduct, the first part that you read out loud and, and were asking some questions, then it starts listing one through twelve.
There's three pages to this document.
Mr. Goldson is describing correctly, yeah, so maybe amend it to include one.
That's how I, but I.
One A, one B, yeah.
That's how I moved it, I moved it point one, point one A and point one B, I moved it that way.
Okay, yeah. Now, there are, there are three pages that we have, um, so we're gonna be voting on five, one, three, one, point one, five, one, three, one, point one, A, and five, one, three, one, point one, B.
Yes, ma'am, that's where I moved it.
Okay, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. And, I'm gonna go again, Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Goldson?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Mayor Elecker?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, and so that motion carries. And moving on to the next policy, seven, five, five, one. Naming it.
I'll move. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Wolf, Mr. Goldson?
Well, you really missed him, huh? My, um, I, I, I don't see, um, any, any real problems with the, with the changes that are made to this, this document. I did send some suggestions around to the board to make it a little clearer, so in the future, when people are seeing this, ten years from now, when we're not on the board, um, they'll, they'll be clear about who has what authority. Um, so I, I recommended some changes to the, to the section that included the, um, the appointments to a committee for renaming a building or major, um, part of a school, um, building. Um, I don't know if you all received that, I sent it out, um, a couple days ago. And on, on the, on the first page, halfway down, it has, um, bullet points and who would be on the committee. And it says, um, superintendent or designate, it says building principal. That, that should probably have or designate also, but, um, I, I didn't really, um, I, I didn't mess with that, um, two teachers, as two teachers, and I was, and I would suggest that we say named by the teachers' union president.
No, no, that's not a union issue.
No, yeah.
Well, who should be appointing the teachers, though?
They should, their peers.
Their peers.
Their peers is, is the union, is the union, right?
So when we did this to, to, to do the, um, the renaming of theme, I appointed all of these persons, with the exception of the two appointees from each board member.
That's the point I'm making. You, you are illustrating my point perfectly. Why should the board president make those appointments? As other board members just said, it should be their peers, right?
Our bylaws, that the board president names the committees.
Right, right, it's, it's a board function.
It is, it is on our bylaws.
And it's a board function, it's not, it's not, it's not the building function.
Mm-hmm.
The board shall establish, and that was already there, Mr. Goldson. But I want to give you a scenario, and again, I, I don't like to talk more than necessary, but I will tell you this, schools have SBMTs. They have governance that has nothing to do with union, has to do with how they run their buildings. If we take away that kind of relationship that they build in their governance in schools, we will not, we will not be granting schools, teams of schools, the capacity to impact their own buildings. So I, I, again, that is not a union issue, and we are including all stakeholders in this.
I, I, I am, I, I am not stuck on the union issue. What I'm stuck on is who actually makes the, who makes the recommendations for the appointments, right? Because the board eventually, the, 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 the board president makes the recommendation to the board to approve, as, as I just heard, is that?
That's what they, that's what you had approved already, you had approved that already.
So, so what I'm, what, what I'm asking you is, what, what I'm saying to you is, how would, how does the board president have greater, why would the board president make appointments as opposed to the SPMC? Or, I, I, you, you know, who, who are making these appointments? Are you saying the board president? Are you saying the board president that we should make it clear because?
Yeah.
I was just confused.
They they bore.
Point of order, point of order, so.
Mayor Elicker.
Just, uh, if someone has the floor, they should have the floor and then they can change to someone else. Uh, if they wish, if Madam Chair wishes someone else to speak.
Go ahead, Doctor Joyner.
Okay, Madam Chair, this is a board, this is a policy. And the only entity in the state, in the city of New Haven that can create policy for the board is the board. Board elects a president, the president appoints chairs of committees. As 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 well of all appointments, every president has had that power and authority. So it it is not, it is not usurping anybody's authority or anybody's input. Because even the board president has to, has to um, work with the board. And with other entities in order to get something like this done. So this is not a, this is a policy we voted, this is something we voted on previously when we voted on a naming policy. And we just only added this part of it because we are now trying to name parts of a building. And uh, and it it is policy, we are the policymaking body. The board president, whomever he or she is, is the duly elected person to uh, to 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 make those appointments. And it's consistent with the policy we passed the last time. It's just that now we are adding to it. Uh, a measure so that we can name parts of building without the uh, real. Uh, going through all of the changes that we have to go through to name new construction.
Thank you, Doctor Joyner. Does anyone else um, wanna say anything on this topic before I go back to Mister Goldson?
I had the floor, it was taken from me, quite frankly. Well, that 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 a president, um, in 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 that list, it says of older person, it should actually say older. Um, but the older person um, names um, names a person to the committee. Um, that person is not the board president, nor is a member of this board. But they're getting to name an appointment to the board, to to the committee. So so you you you're you're saying one thing that, one way you're saying, one thing you're saying is that. The the board president makes all these appointments, and on the other hand. In the same document, three lines down, you're saying that an older person gets to make an appointment. So there is a dichotomy here and confusion here about who is going to make recommendations. Now, the board eventually approves the committee, but who are making recommendations to these positions? That's what it should, that's what, that's what we're talking about, we're not talking about who's making appointments, we're talking about who's making recommendations. You're saying that the older makes a recommendation. So why would the board president or the S P M C, I mean, um, the um, the union president or the S P M C. Uh, be allowed to make a recommendation?
It says that, Mister Goldson, that the.
Yes.
I don't see where it says that, but I may, I may be missing it.
Could you tell us where it is? Oh, I'm sorry, um. Um, you're you're right, it says all the person of the war, so it's it's actually the older person who's going to be on the committee. Right.
Of the war that the school is.
Alright, I I am going to make just one more point, and then um, I'm probably gonna vote against this because I don't think it's democratic, democrat. The demo, democratic, um, I think that those representatives to that committee should be folks. Who are recommended by their uh, by their constituencies or their peers, as you guys said. Uh, that is not, that is not what we're saying here, clearly by what you guys said. And that is that the board president makes all the appointments. Uh, I have concerns about that, that's, that that may be what you are doing, Madam President, but that's not what I did when I was president. Uh, when I named.
That you gave us all.
When when I named the committee, when I named the committee. Uh, by the way, those bylaws are outdated because this policy that we're voting on now.
But we haven't.
That was, that was, that was.
We haven't changed this to the bylaws, Mister.
That was adopted, that was, that was adopted outside of those bylaws.
Except that we haven't made.
Amended.
Bylaws yet.
I I keep interrupting you, you keep interrupting me while I'm talking, Madam President.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, um, th- those bylaws are outdated because this policy was adopted after those bylaws were adopted. Um, so um, it it wouldn't be in those bylaws that you just put up. But um, a- again, um. I I I think that um, if we wanna be fair, I mean, the reason why we did a renaming committee so that it was a fair process. For all of the stakeholders to participate in. And if only one person is making the appointments, it's not a fair process. So if this is a document that we're voting to adopt, I can't support this document, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mister Goldson, Mayor Elicker.
Madam President, uh, it's not only one person that's making the appointments. Each board member has two appointees as well, um, I I can't imagine another board out there has a more democratic process. And as a parent of the school that most recently changed its name. I have heard no complaints about that process, there were many people involved in the process. And uh, the uh, the school community is very satisfied with the name from everything I've heard. So I I I feel like this is being misrepresented here, this is a very democratic, democratic, democratic process.
I agree, but that that's the usual. Um, I just wanna point out, the bylaws of the board nine one two one, line eight. Says about the board president, the board president shall preside at all board meetings. He or she shall, number eight, appoint members to the committees created by the board. So this is in our bylaws, this is how we've been doing it, even when you were board president, Mister Goldson. Anyone else wish to speak on the matter before I go back to Mister Goldson? Mister Goldson? You're muted.
Thank you, Madam President, to my, to my esteemed colleague, Mayor, um, Elicker. Um, this this process is not democratic, the each board member gets two appointments. And and the board pres- the board president gets two, four, six, eight, ten. Eleven, I'm two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve appointments to the board. So I I I don't consider that democra- democratic at all, thank you, Madam President.
It's an executive privilege.
Thank you, Doctor Joyner and Mister Goldson, um, seeing no further discussion, we'll move to approve. Policy seven five five one as written, Doctor Joyner?
Yes.
Doctor Yarborough?
Yes.
Doctor Benitez?
Yes.
Mister Goldson?
No, no.
Mister Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Ms. Roman is still not in, uh, Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, and that motion carries.
Sorry.
So we'll move on to Finance and Operations Committee in the absence of Mister Wilcox. Um, Vice Chair, Doctor Yarborough, will discuss and move the items.
Thank you, um, does someone wanna move agreement ten? I will abstain from that one.
I I can move that one for you, I think I have the.
I can move if you wanna just, alright.
Go ahead, Doctor Joyner.
So moved.
That we approved agreement number ten?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I will second that motion, any discussion on agreement number ten?
Madam Chair, just if people don't have the, the public doesn't have the agenda in front of them, could one of you say what? Because I'm losing my voice, agreement ten is.
Agreement ten.
Agreement.
Friend, Friend Center.
Agreement with Friends Center for children to provide funding to support costs associated with provision of sixty full day, full year yearly. Childhood spaces from July one twenty-two to June thirtieth twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand six hundred. Dollars. Um, it's been properly seconded, any discussion? Mister Goldson?
You're muted. My hand up by accident, sorry about that.
Okay. Alright, seeing no discussion, we'll vote to approve agreement number ten of the F and O items. Um, Doctor Joyner?
Yes.
Doctor Yarborough?
Abstain.
Doctor Benitez?
Yes.
Mister Goldson?
Abstain.
Mister Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, and so that motion carries. Eleven, oh, go ahead, Doctor Yarborough.
Madam President?
Mister Goldson?
I thank you, um, point of order, I asked um, um, Mister um, Wilcox if um, he can move two items separately, he agreed to it.
Mm-hmm, that's what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I moved that we approve agreement fifteen, agreement with New Haven Public Schools. To provide funding to support costs associated with provision of one hundred and forty-two full day, full year. And sixty-eight part day school year, uh, early childhood spaces.
Second.
Thank you, Doctor Yarborough, Doctor Joyner, any discussion? Mister Goldson?
Thank you, Ma- thank you, Madam President, um, this one makes me feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone, um, we're approving an agreement. We're we're approving an agreement to agree with ourselves, to provide ourselves money. For um, a childcare program, I'm very confused about that, I don't know how we all don't have a conflict on it. Since we're approving a contract with ourselves, um, so I'm going to abstain from voting on this one also.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Goldson. Mayor Elicker?
I mean, given Mister Goldson's uh, comment, can we have staff just briefly comment on why? Uh, this is put in front of us, why we can't just do this without having a contract with ourselves?
Doctor Tracy? Uh, Ms. Augustine Jefferson raised her hand, maybe she has. No, that's. Doctor Tracy, can someone speak to?
Anne's there too.
Uh, Ms. Augustine Jefferson's coming on to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Augustine Jefferson, you may speak.
Okay, um, Mister Goldson, uh, we have an eight million dollar grant from School Readiness. Uh, we had a fiduciary, fiduciary for that grant, but we also provide direct services. So we're one of the, among the twenty-one programs that are providing services for school readiness. So we have a one point two million dollar grant that supports two hundred and ten uh, students in our, in five of our uh, sites. Um, and this money comes from the O E C, the Office of Early Childhood. And this additional funding, if you look at the agenda, it's eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars or so, and it's um. They're uh, giving that money to those twenty-one or so programs. And we're getting a portion of that, so that we um, have an agreement um. To provide those services and we report that information in um. Uh, request for payments to the state, so we're a provider and the fiduciary. So the the agreement really is with. New Haven Public Schools and the Office of Early Childhood. More so than ourselves. If that makes any sense to you.
Thank you, Ms. Augustine Jefferson, um, and I'm, I'm sure Linda Hannan could. Could chime in on that as well, as far as the fiscal piece of it. And we do, we follow the um, the same protocols um, for our programs as we do um, the community programs. Hmm, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the item before I go back to Mister Goldson? Go ahead, Ms. Hannan, but there's an echo, Doctor Tracy.
Yeah, we know, yeah, we're fixing that, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Hannan is right here.
Okay, also, um, this this agreement has been historic. And the reason being is that we are, there are slots um, across the board and we are the fiduciary. But we do also have to give New Haven Public Schools um, slots as well. When they, when when we don't meet our quota, we then have to subtract those, so we, so everyone has a contract. So there be no misunderstanding with with the funds, this is just the way we've always done it.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Ms. Hannan, Mister Goldson?
Thank you, Madam President, I understand what both Ms. Augustine Jefferson and Ms. Hannan said. I mean, it's clear that we're a pass through um, for another organization. But I've never seen, um, and maybe I haven't been paying attention, but I've never seen us have an agreement with ourselves. To give us ourselves money, I've never seen that before. And I'd like to hear from our legal counsel about, I I I mean, it it just doesn't. I I've never seen anything like this before, so I I would like to hear from our legal counsel. Uh, if he can make me feel more comfortable, I would love to be able to vote for it, though my vote's not gonna really make a difference, but um. I, if I have some legal grounds to stand on, then I'm I'm more comfortable.
Hold on, Doctor Joyner.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure, yes.
Okay, um. It it is a bit anomalous for the board to enter into a contract with itself, which is essentially what this is. Because it's between the board and New Haven Public Schools, which is the same thing. Oh, um, so that's unusual. Um, all this is governed by the uh, uh, by the terms of the state e- early childhood grants. Uh, with which uh, the uh, the school, the board has um. You know, has overarching agreements with, um, I'd be happy to review the agreement, I haven't been asked for advice on it. Uh, up until now, so I'd be happy to review the agreement, if you just wanna pass this, this particular one to the next meeting. Um, I I took a quick look at it, and there are clauses that we would typically not um, agree to. Um, but again, because it's it's an agreement with ourselves, it's it's um. Hard to figure that out.
Could I ask the following question, um, who signs?
Me, sure.
Who signs the agreements, I mean, there's supposed to be two signatures on it, um, usually it's the board president and a representative of the organization. That we have, or or the superintendent, the representative of the organization, who actually signs this contract, did our board president sign both lines?
Um. Let's take a look at it.
So um, I understand Mister Goldson, may I speak, yes?
Yes, go ahead, Doctor Tracy.
I understand Mister Goldson, question of this, this, this is something that's been going on for years. This has always come through the board in this manner. Um, also acting on the fiduciary for um, the readiness program. And anything that we do comes through the board, but if. It's a good question that you raise, I I must say, but precedents have been set where this has always been like this.
I've never, I've never seen this contract before, I I know that we do it for other organizations, but I've never seen us have an agreement with ourselves, um. I I, please, I need to see that again, um. I'm 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 not gonna vote for it, I'm just, I'm gonna abstain, I I just feel uncomfortable with it at this point, but I'm not gonna. I'm not gonna make any more hay about it, thank you.
Uh, Attorney Alexiatis and then Doctor Joyner?
Uh, I just wanted to ask staff if there's any harm in deferring this to this particular agreement to the next meeting. We understand that the other, that the other independent schools need the funding and that should be approved, the others should be approved forthwith, but um. My my question is, is there any harm in in deferring this one until uh, uh, we can take a closer look at it?
Doctor Tracy?
Um, we can defer it, um, because it it says July one twenty-two to be, you know, in motion. We, and we could probably search for others that we have done in the past. To share that precedents have been set, but yeah, we can, we can defer this.
And I just, if I may add, is my understanding is that all these agreements are for uh, supplemental early childhood funding? Uh, staff can correct me, but that was my understanding of them all, that it's not the uh, the entire amount of the early childhood funding?
Supplemental.
This is supplemental, so we've already have agreements in place and funding in place uh, from the beginning of the school year.
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you, Doctor Joyner?
Uh, I'm really anxious to see what the legal opinion is on this, because I don't see how any individual board member will gain anything by voting for this uh, in the saying that we vote for budgets that, that cover the whole system. Uh, I'm, I'm really fascinated by this argument and, and glad it was raised, but I just don't see how I could gain, how you could gain, how anybody on the board could gain uh, by voting for this, because we vote all the time for a budget much larger than this for the students in the system. And we're certainly not funding any money to anybody or, uh, and we're funding money to the organization, but we do that every time we vote on, on a budget item. So I'm, I'm anxious to hear that too, because, uh, again, I'd love to see this.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. So just to be clear, we're deferring this item to the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Madam President?
Mr. Galton, go ahead.
Uh, 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 two quick points. One is, um, yes, we, we, we approve money to ourselves all the time to spend on our students, but that's our money. This money comes from a different source, um, and they have auditors that are going to look at this, and I just want to make sure that we're clean. So at this point, at, at, at this point, Madam President, I'm going to withdraw my motion to approve. If someone else wants to make it, that's fine, but I'm gonna withdraw my motion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr.
Madam President. I think Mr. Galton makes a good point. I think we should defer because, uh, we should know. And, uh, I would support, uh, what he's saying about, uh, getting a legal opinion regarding this.
Yep.
It just hasn't come up before, so let's, let's figure it out.
Okay, so Agreement number fifteen is deferred to the next meeting. Okay. Thank you. Dr. Yarborough?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we approve Agreement Twenty-three, Amendment Number One to Agreement A twenty-two dash one-six-one-six with Shipman and Goodman, Goodwin Labor, uh, to increase funding amount from eighty thousand by four-hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two-hundred and four dollars and sixty cents for a total amount of five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, two-hundred and four dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner, Dr. Yarborough. Uh, any discussion?
Madam President, I think the, um, reporting secretary has her name, her handle.
Uh, Ms. Mason?
Uh, yes, I just want to make a point. Um, Mr. Galton said he's gonna withdraw his motion.
Mm-hmm.
The motion that, that just got deferred was, was moved by, um,
Yes, it was. Agreement number fifteen.
I'm sorry, okay, my, my, my bad.
Okay.
Also, the influence shifts, okay, but.
So, Dr. Yarborough, you gotta, you gotta withdraw them, the, the, if it's been withdrawn.
I, I withdraw the motion. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, yes. Okay, so we are on Agreement.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three. Any discussion? Mr. Galton?
Madam President, I, I don't know where to start with this one. Um, this agreement has been multiplied by, by, um, by over six times, from eighty thousand to five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, um, dollars, a half a million dollars. I don't know how we get to that point, um, without keeping the board abreast of the rising costs. Um, and, um, I've asked for, uh, I asked for additional information um, around how this occurred. I have not received it. Um, my understanding is that I heard someone say earlier today, um, that, um, there was some sort of, um, I, I heard it today, and I've heard it before, that we're not supposed to have, um, um, increased, um, change orders to contracts that are over twenty percent. This is over, I, I, my, my mind can't even calculate what percent is, um, the increase, um, of this contract is. I mean, we went from eighty thousand dollars from, to, to a half a million dollars without, um, any warning. Um, I'm glad Mr. Wilcox is, um, is back, um, at the meeting. Uh, maybe he could explain it. Um, I, I just don't know how we got there, and, and, and I'm wondering, and I, I asked this in, in an email that I sent earlier, what does, where is this money coming from, and what does it take from? I mean, we, we went from less than a hundred thousand dollars to a half a million. So who is going to be hurt by, um, by this additional, um, funding, uh, to this, to this, um, law firm? And so that's the first question. Secondly, how do we get here in the first place without, without being informed through the process that these, uh, these costs were increasing? Um, and thirdly, um, I was told that it was increased funding related to union contracts, and I'd like to know what those, you, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the invoices. I, I just don't understand this, and maybe, maybe it'd be better, it'd be clearer if we got that information, but we don't have it, or at least I don't have it. So I, this, this is very concerning to me. Thank you, Madam President.
Dr. Joyner?
Uh, Mr. Galton, you're right to be concerned, uh, about such a, a great increase. I do believe there's an explanation, um, and, uh, I think it's a rapidly developing situation whereby we have two major cases, uh, against us that initially started out with us not knowing how it's gonna go. And I think that, uh, the other side, the plaintiff, has sort of upped the ante, and it's gonna require a lot more legal services than, than we had anticipated. And the firm in question was the firm that was handling the matter in the first place. But I think, I think that there is an explanation. I think that the board is entitled to it, and I'm gonna stop running my mouth now, because I think that it's in the very capable hands of our superintendent, the Chair of the Finance Committee, and, and support from the, uh, Corporate Counselor's Office. But they are two potentially challenging cases that, that started out one way and seems to be morphing into something else. But you're right to ask those questions. We are the custodians and stewards of taxpayers' interests, and we, we should know specifically why uh, that or any other matter like that went from one number to, uh, much higher other.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any further discussion? Mr. Wilcox?
Um, so my apologies, I'm just getting into the meeting. I haven't heard a lot of the discussion that led up to this. Uh, fully agree that moving forward, we need to, um, I mean, we do take a look annually in the Finance and Operations Committee meeting at all of our legal costs, what these contracts cost, charge, what these contracts, uh, cost the district, um, and, uh, this was a large amount in the meeting. It was discussed about, um, you know, labor contracts, negotiations of that, um, but then also, um, some other legal matters that are looming out there that this, this firm is working on. That said, we can get better reporting. We should have better reporting. Maybe we need to, um, look at this on a, on a, not maybe a monthly, but a quarterly basis as to where these costs are, or, uh, ask the district to develop, uh, make mechanisms to make sure that when they're uh, estimating what the legal costs are gonna be in a future year, when they're in the budgeting process, that they are, um, having in their known things that are gonna be happening in that year, like neighbor, labor negotiations so that we can increase the, the labor contract, um, uh, the, the labor negotiating contractor, uh, with the, with the legal firms. Uh, and then also, maybe we need to have something that when things are gonna happen, we're, we're finding out much sooner as to where this is. So I think we do need to ask the district to, um, tighten up their processes on this to make sure that there's no surprises moving forward. That said, um, I, you know, I do think that moving forward with this is gonna be necessary, just in terms of the costs that we need to incur, uh, due to a year with a lot of, uh, legal issues, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Mayor Ellicker?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I, I think it's been pretty clear that Shipman has been involved in a lot of work. Um, so it's, it's not, uh, shocking, but it is surprising, the, uh, pretty dramatic increase. Can, can we hear from the administration, uh, more of a, a reasoning behind the proposal, why we haven't been notified earlier? And also, just for clarity, the increased amount is not what has already been incurred. It is a portion of what has already been incurred, and I think it would be helpful for the administration to clarify that as well.
So, thank you, Mayor, and, um, so it, it is, it is interesting that, I've been on this board for what, about four years now? We have seen the uptick in litigation against districts in several different aspects. We have seen folks who have, um, lawsuits filed against the district that's causing the district an arm and a leg. Some of those lawsuits were encouraged to happen, and we have these pending out right now that's going on with us. We have disputes for sped services. We have the negotiation of teachers, administrators, and we have a lot of, um, other things on there that the board has dealt with. A couple of these before in terms of awarding funds to individuals. We also have, um, C H R O complaints, F Y A complaints, representation, a lot of, and then our general labor contracts. A lot of these things, I, I could send to the board, um, this breakdown. And we are anticipating that some of these things, some of these have been closed, but some of these things will continue to occur um, unless New Haven comes to a settlement. We are gonna schedule a, a full session of executive session, next board meeting, to go more deeply into some of these, some of these lawsuits that are out there that may still cause the system an arm and a leg. Those are gonna be discussed, two of those major ones will be discussed in the upcoming executive session that we will have, that, um, we'll have the lawyer here to explain certain things. Another thing we need to understand is that the, the service per hour is not a cheap service for, um, working with Shipman, Shipman and Goodman. They're a good lawyer firm, but the service every minute counts. And they say that every minute counts. So they have billed us with the hours they serve and certain different things, and I'm willing to share that. Um, we just have to do some redaction of names from here, so these don't go out there, flow out there in the public, some with people's names on them. But we'll be willing to, to share how we come to, well, we have an overall total of two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, and we are anticipating that moving forward with some of the things that are hanging out there, it's gonna cost more. So we try to be on the safe side and say, let's put this extra amount there to be on the safe side. That should be run over. You know, the, the, the current amount that was built up to December, that we will have enough funds. And if they don't use it, they don't use it. So I've heard Mr. Galton, so where is this money coming from? Whatever it is, we have to pay them. They have serviced us. We have to pay them from some source.
Thank you, Dr. Tracy. I, I'm just gonna add, please don't email anything around this um, before checking with Attorney Alexiades, because it could involve strategy or attorney-client privileged information that shouldn't be out, be out there. So just make sure you check with Attorney Alexiades first to make sure, um, because then maybe it needs to come from him as an attorney-client privileged email. Thank you. Mr. Galton?
Thank you, Madam President. Were you suggesting that, that board members shouldn't be emailing information regarding this? I mean, I don't have, I don't have any information to, to, um, email.
I was asking Dr. Tracy
Oh.
to check with Attorney Alexiades first.
Got it.
Emailing anything just to make sure that we're not
Understood.
violating any.
Understood. Uh, Ma- Madam President, um, this may not be shocking to, to, um, to, to Mayor Ellicker, but it certainly is shocking to me, uh, that we went from an eighty thousand dollars to a half a million dollar budget uh, without any warning, without any word, and then asked, then, and then are told and asked to approve this without any information. Now, maybe Mr. Wilcox has information, maybe Dr. Joyner has information, but I certainly don't have that information, because I was told, um, through the grapevine or through something I read or whatever, that this was related to labor costs. I never heard anything about lawsuits. Uh, this is the first time I'm hearing that. Um, so I'm a little concerned. I, I'm not, I'm a lot concerned, um, about this, and I, I would, I, I would, I mean, we, we have a budget here that we'll get ready to talk about a little, a little later, uh, where we have a projected four-point-five million dollar deficit. Uh, that's, that's, that's where our deficit is right now. Now, we're probably catch up, we always do, but we're, we're certainly not gonna catch up by, by, by increasing contracts like this, and I, I assume that um, our labor contracts are in other contractual services. Um, we, we have a, a, a four-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit in that line. Now, I don't know if this, um, addition increases that deficit by another four-hundred-thousand dollars or not. I don't know. Uh, I don't know if that's been figured into these numbers yet, but, you know, Shipman and Goodman's a, a good law firm. We use them a lot. Um, I still, you know, would, would like to see, um, the invoices of what they're charging us for before, um, we, we actually, um, approve it, and I'm wondering why this is on the agenda this week as opposed to not being on the agenda next week, the next meeting, when, um, Dr. Tracy said, uh, we will have an executive dis, um, session to discuss, um, legal costs. So, um, I would make a mo, I'm going to make a motion at this point that we, um, that we, that we table this item until after we have, um, till, till after we have that briefing, um, from the administration on our, on our legal costs.
There are seconds.
They, before we go.
Hold, hold on, Dr. Tracy. Is there, is there a second? Okay, seeing no second, that motion fails, Mr. Galton. Dr. Tracy, you were gonna clarify something?
No, I was saying that the, the session that I talked about or rooted to was in regards to two specific lawsuits, not the whole entire shipment. We've been dealing with two major lawsuits that have been hanging out there um, and, and continues that, that I will have to inform the board about. So that's what that session will be in the next board meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Tracy. Uh, Mayor Ellicker, and then Dr. Joyner?
Yeah, just, just to make sure that my remarks are clear. Um, I said that it is not shocking that we have a higher bill, but it's surprising just how high the bill is. And we should pay our bills, and we owe Shipman and Goodman a significant amount of money. I think we should follow through with that payment. I do think that it's really important for, uh, Dr. Tracy and your team to, um, give us more of a kind of timely notification if we think we're going above in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ellicker. Dr. Joyner? You're, you're muted, Dr. Joyner.
First of all, I'd like to con, con, uh, compliment the whole board on how we, we're dealing with the meeting so far. The policy stuff was complicated, and, and we got through that pretty well, better than the Congress and the Senate, which is, pay grades above us. Um, I think, I think if we think a little, little bit rationally about legal cost in any organization, that, that might be the most volatile item in the budget, because you can't anticipate lawsuits. Neither can you anticipate, uh, lawsuits becoming larger than they were initially. And so I, 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 I believe that when we do have the discussion in executive session, and when we consider the fact that we were negotiating with, I believe, two or three unions this year, uh, and we have these two lawsuits pending that, that, that started out Uh, and we have these two lawsuits pending that 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 started out one way, but appear to be growing in intensity. That that the figure that you see is a sort of estimation, o- other than what we already owe them. There's an estimation of uh how much the cost will increase depending on the the position we take. And in some instances, it's in, it's in your best interest to settle, even if you know you're right. And in some instances, you don't want to set a precedent so that you become a uh patsy for anyone who wants to file a a claim against you. So that's the nature of 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 the way school systems and other public agencies are going now, because anyone can sue you. Uh, and typically, the burden burden of proof should be on the plaintiff. But the way the court system is organized now, in order to get a summary judgment, you have to spend a whole lot of legal costs in order to do that as well. So let's try to be open-minded, let's try to be open to being educated about how this new world we're living in is 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 evolving. And 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 let's try to bring our minds together around this to not only understand this particular situation, but to project forward and do as much as we possibly can to be timely informed, as as Mr. Golson and the mayor has said. And and also to think in terms of where we can get the best representation uh for our money, because this is um, this is a challenge. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Dr. Yarborough, and then Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, thank you. Uh, for those who are listening and are interested um for what information is available, uh, there is a memorandum included in our board packet that begins to speak to uh the associated cost and timeline. Uh, so that can be a beginning point uh for anyone who hasn't read it, uh, it might be interested in getting a little more information on what's been disclosed to our board.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, I was just gonna follow up with a similar comment, and I apologize because I wasn't here when you all first started talking about this item, but the um, as the memo outlines, this is for costs that we've currently accrued, which um notification of those costs apparently came in in November and December, which, you know, hearing about in December would have been better agreed uh or at our first uh meeting in January. Um, and then the second thing is that the most of these costs are the district projecting forward with best estimates of how much more it's gonna cost this year, which is three hundred thousand of the um full request is uh to cover the stuff that's going to be coming in based on what they're looking at now, but um, so just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam President. I am open-minded and sober in my decision-making process, and I try to make decisions not based on emotion but based on data and facts. I have not been provided the data and the facts of 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 what we're paying for. Now, maybe other board members have, and they have better information than I do. Um, one moment, Dr. Joyner says two lawsuits, the next moment, Dr. Tracy says, no, it's not two lawsuits. Um, I'm briefing you on those next week. So I don't know what we're paying for. I don't know um what services we got. I don't know where we are along in the process. I don't know who screwed up to to pu- to put us in these lawsuits in the first place. Um, and 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 I certainly don't know why we weren't informed, why there is not a process in place that keeps us updated on a on increases to contracts like this. Once we got to ninety thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, we should have gotten gotten a note that says, hey, our costs are going to increase, and um this is what they've already increased to, and this is what we predict, but we didn't get any of that. And now we're being asked to come to a meeting um with this um one-page memo that has general, general points in it, not real details, and 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 asked to approve a half a million dollar expenditure that does not go into the children's pockets, but instead goes into the pockets of the um of a firm in Hartford um or or up north. I don't have a problem with with them getting paid for the work they do. I just don't know what work they did. So so, Madam President, um, this is my last comment on this. I'm not going to vote for this. I would urge my colleagues um uh to to give a better explanation to the to the community um what this is, because guess what? This is operating um money. This comes from the Board of Alders, and the last thing I want to do is go to them um and 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 Mayor June for a budget request, and they say, you guys throwing money at the lawyers up in Hartford, so we why are you asking us for more money? You know, so i- i- if you guys want to carry that burden, that's fine. Until I get more information, I'm not going to. Thank you, Madam.
Mayor Ellicott?
Uh, sure. Mr. Golden's voice may have more stamina than mine tonight, um, so. Uh, but I did want to respond, you you know, the the people here are trying to do the right thing. There's no conspiracy, there's no, you know, one person having some information and sharing it with another person and keeping board members out, and and I just think it's really important to make clear, and just because we have lawsuits doesn't mean that someone screwed up. Sometimes sometimes that's the case, but a lot of times it's not, uh, and and I think it's important to just put that on the record in response to what Mr. Golson said, and also remind folks that Mr. Golson said that was his last comment.
Yeah, I did.
Mayor Ellicott.
I did.
Ho- hold on, Mr. Gold, then does does anyone else want to comment on this item before I go back to Mr. Golden? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam President. I and I understand what um um Mayor Ellicott is saying, and I do have, my voice does have more stamina than his tonight, so he better watch it. Um, uh, really, really quickly, um. Clearly, there are, there are some board members that have more information. I don't know anything about these two lawsuits that Dr. Joyner has referenced several times. So he has more information than I have.
Uh, no, no.
You.
Dr. Dr. Joyner, ho- hold on, hold on.
I I I don't know why, maybe I missed the briefing um on those lawsuits. Um, I I I don't know. Um, I I just, you know, my my point was, I don't have the information. Other board members can't do. They can make decisions based on the information they have. I'm going to make the decision based on the information I don't have. Uh, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Dr. Joyner?
Madam Chair, the the whole board knows about the two lawsuits.
Mm-hmm.
But, um. But again, some can start out one way and get much bigger, but the whole board knows about. I don't know anything that that nobody else doesn't know, because we all know about the two particular losses.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Is that, is that it, Dr. Joyner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no further comment, Mr. Golden?
Just joking.
Uh. Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote to approve agreement number twenty-three. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
No.
Mr. Cruz Bustamante?
No.
Um, Bustamante's still not here. Uh, Mayor Ellicott?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, and so that motion carries. And I think we can move on to the rest of the F and O items. Oh, Dr. Yarborough?
Just another motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, move that we approve the remaining uh the one abstract, the remaining twenty-one agreements, five contracts as listed on our agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough. Mr. Golden, any discussion? Uh, Dr. G- uh, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, very quickly, I noticed um item number twenty-four, which is an agreement with a firm to develop an RFP um for the c- for the transportation services. Um, I understand that we're a little behind schedule um by several weeks, and I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to get this RFP process done in time so that we can have a competitive process for transportation services, which is probably our largest um item in our budget. Behind teachers and and staff.
Golden? Mary, Yolanda?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, yes, I have had conversation with uh Cessna, who is a very uh well-known firm, very uh tied into the market. Um, they're extremely um utilized throughout the state of Connecticut for uh not only RFP services, but also for contract review as well as uh other services that I outlined um in her memo. Um, the RFP process was delayed by two weeks. Um, and uh we've been diligently working with uh the Cessna group to uh evaluate the the needs of the RFP to ensure that we're uh we're keeping uh the time as as close to what the original uh timeline was as possible. Um, we should have a a more, what uh Cessna provided um to the um the in their, in their memo as far as timeline. Um, we're working to uh firm up i- into a more uh specific timeline this week. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Are you muted?
I I think the president has to make that decision.
I'm sorry, I I I don't want to keep going without it getting.
Go ahead, Mr. Golden, then Mr. Wilcox.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I I'd like to commend uh Mr. Lamb and um the the his staff um for um moving this process forward. It's 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 a better process than we've had in years. Um, I'm still concerned about the the tight timeline and supply demands and and whether we can get it done or not. Uh, but but I am happy to see um that the process is moving forward. Um, if if it's a little slower than we wanted it to be, still moving forward at at a good pace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilcox?
Uh, yes, I I also am glad to see things that are going forward with this, and uh just wanted to invite the administration that they can uh let us know between meetings if that um if the fully um, if the full timeline is completed before the next finance and operations meeting, please just send it to the board, and when the thing is posted to um the city's bid um software uh bonfire, please also just let the board know that things are progressing on that, and um I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Mr. Lamb?
Uh, thank you. Just in communication with the Cessna group, um, we've committed to providing written updates to finance and operations to the entirety of the process. Um, that way, there is full transparency as to where we are with everything, what we're doing, who's involved, what steps we're 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 uh achieving, what steps we're having difficulties with. Um, this is gonna involve a a lot of players to get this written, um, to make sure that we're we're taking what we inherited and and build a a contract and an RFP process that will stand the test of time. We want to make sure that we're doing something that that is um as as forward-thinking as possible. Um, and that may take a couple of extra steps and a little bit extra time. Um, but I think in the end, we'll end up with a better product, um, and we'll end up with a better service. But we want to make sure that we're doing it as expeditiously as possible, but we still need to make sure that we're doing it right. And the right part is a little bit more important than the when part. Um, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that the contract reflects that the true need of district for for now and in the future. Um, and that's kind of what my montage has been with the Cessna team. Um, and I I really think that the the team that they put together um to to write this RFP has the experience, has the market knowledge, and has the um the chutzpah to be able to put together something that's really gonna be beneficial to the district.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb, and seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on the remaining F and O items. Um, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
I think she had to leave for a minute.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
There she is, yes. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz Bustamante?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicott?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, and so those items carries. I have slots for two more votes, guys. Like, you've taken up my entire page. All right, we'll move on to the students' report.
Okay, um, good evening. This really doesn't get any easier the more I do it. Um, I'm not gonna say much, because I think at this point it might fall upon deaf ears. It's been a long day for everybody. Um, I've been getting back into Board of Education work. Thank you for everyone's patience. I had a lot of things going on at school and at home. Um. Firstly, I would like to implore that the Board of Education consider moving back to in-person meetings. Um, I've gotten a lot of concerned parents and students saying that they want this, so I think at the very least, we should have hybrid meetings. And maybe doing that, we can also recognize and be grounded in how much in disrepair and dysfunction our schools are in right now. Like, in my school, I will recross one of the classrooms completely flooded and is unusable, and the teacher's personal property was destroyed because of work orders that were put in since September that weren't followed through, and so because we didn't fix it at the get-go, it's a more expensive repair now. And because my teachers and the administration are so courteous and diplomatic, they didn't let me sneak in and take some pictures. I was going to show you all today. Um, they follow process. I don't have to. I don't care. Um, and so I think it's an important reminder, and I think if we're having students go to school, we're having teachers teach at school, we're having administration work at school, we also need to be working at school with them. Um, other than that, there will be a citywide student council meeting this Friday from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty P M uh Hill House High School. Uh, it'll be a People Power and Youth Mobilization one-on-one training put on in collaboration with the Citywide Youth Coalition. They've done a lot of great work. I've worked with them in the past. Um, because in the meantime, we've gotten student responses from October to December, and a longer process to compile a list of material wants and needs and demands from the board. Um, and so I put together a committee of local community organizers, union workers, uh, youth activists, et cetera, to kind of look through those responses and compile a list. Um, and I'm letting y'all know, not as a warning, but as a notice, that like I don't have any legal authority in this board, but, you know, part of my job is to represent the students and to lead in that way. And a lot of students are really pissed off, so we, when I bring up a lot of the issues here on the board, it's not to get a pat on the head or a good job, but to actually get get stuff resolved. Um, other, so that's the Citywide Student Council Meeting. Um, again, I think.
Point of order?
Dr. Joyner?
I don't think it's appropriate to use uh language that that many people consider insulting. And I don't know if any board member has any authority appoint committees other than the uh president.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Um, your point of order is well-taken. Uh, Mr. Bustamante, please move forward, but just watch the language.
Got you. Okay. Um, again, I think we should have meetings back in person. Uh, there's Citywide Student Council Meeting on Friday, and other than. Uh, there's a citywide student council meeting on Friday, and other than that, there was another question that parents and students brought up to me a lot. And that is, why will we cross is so overcapacity? I'm not sure if that's a question to direct towards Central Office, towards the Board of Education, or towards Wilbur Cross Administration. But it seems like the student population at Cross has been increasing so much. That we don't have enough teachers or even substitute teachers, facilities workers, to keep up and to maintain the school. So that's the one question I have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Bustamante. Mr. Goldson?
Madam President, um, I, I think our student leader is, is terrific. Um, he, he's, he's doing what all of our student leaders have done, and that is lead. Um, if he, if he said the P word of, it didn't, it didn't, um, upset my sensibility. I certainly didn't clutch my, um, my pearls, but, um, I, I, I want to, um. I, I just want to piggyback on a comment that he made about facility stuff. Um, I got a call, um, not too long ago, and I get these calls all the time. I should be forwarding this information. I do forward it sometimes. Sometimes I miss, I miss out at it. Um, I have a staff member call me and said that there was a sink running continuously for five weeks. In one of the, in one of the student bathrooms and one of the schools. And finally, after the fifth or sixth week, it was finally repaired. Of five weeks of continuous running water. Um, I, I'm wondering how that's happening and, um, and how often is happening. We used to get those complaints all the time when Go-To was here, um, and now we're getting in with the new group. And, um, I would just like to eventually hear a report, um, on what, what kind of work orders we have out there. And, and, and timeliness, how the thing can feel. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Goldson. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Joyner?
Uh, a few things. Uh, first of all, let me, let me compliment all the, uh, assistant superintendents for the work they're doing. At organizing the, uh, teaching and learning policy changes, which is under the purview of governance. Uh, but we do provide content to Dr. Benitez, uh, but she's a process person when it comes to that. Uh, two, two really great conversations and reports at the last T L meeting. One was from the, uh, Teachers Union, and you have it in your packet. Uh, the whole notion of Educators Thriving, which is a program that, that's being done in other parts of the country. That has been, I believe, piloted here, that I would strongly recommend. Essentially, it deals with the, uh, well-being of teachers, the emotional and social well-being of teachers. And, and that's a real concern nationally now, and we're gonna have to do everything possible. To make sure that our teachers and students feel that they're in a safe space emotionally, socially. And we're gonna have to be very deliberate about it, so I would strongly advise every board member to read the, um, material. That, uh, is in your packet on Educators Thriving. And one of the teachers, I want to make sure next time I can give her a name. She said, "We have the Mas Law before we can bloom." And for those of you who know about Abraham Mas Law's hierarchy of needs and Bloom's, uh, taxonomy. Uh, before we can get to learning, we have to get through emotions and mental states. And we can do them both at the same time. I think there's content that lends itself to mental wellness. At the same time, teaching skills and so on and so forth. The other, the other part of the meeting was the presentation by the Science Supervisor. Who is probably, uh, we, we're lucky, we've had back-to-back phenomenal science supervisors. And, uh, Mr. McCain is working very closely with teachers to pilot. A new curriculum, and we got a report on that. And the collaboration between that supervisor and the teachers is just off the charts. And we certainly have to continue to do that work. He, he really is a great hire, Dr. Tracy. Uh, he's been a principal, a teacher, and he's, he's a, uh, pioneer in innovation and science. Frankly, I think that science is, is, is our best hope for a better future. Because it uses evidence to make decisions rather than, uh, emotions and conjecture and, and that sort of thing. And so you're gonna be hearing more about, about, about that going forward. They, they were the two biggest part, parts of our meeting. And, and, and Mr. Keisha Red Hannens has outlined a, a roadmap to getting. Our teaching and learning policies amended. And Dr. Benitez has a great process for bringing that information to the board, uh, doing the first and second readings, just as we did tonight. So that we can, uh, make some changes if necessary in the policy that's been around for so long. So I, I was re- really, I'm very pleased with the way the Teacher and Learning Committee is going. I'm very pleased with the, uh, leadership of Ms. Keisha Red Hannens and the collaboration with the other assistant superintendents. And other staff in the, um, in the district. At our next meeting, we're gonna hear from principals. We heard, we've heard from teachers, and, and we plan to hear from, um, principals and, 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 and parents. Students over the course of the year. And, um, I, I'm so pleased. This is, this is, it's been a godsend for me. And it makes my job easy as a committee chair and as, as well as the support of co-chair, uh, Dr. Benitez. So that's where we are with teaching and learning, and I've concluded my report. If there are any questions, please ask me. If you want to follow up, you can email me or call me or text me. And please read the materials in your packet.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Mr. Wilcox?
Uh, yes, thank you. I was able to attend, um, much of that meeting. Um, thought it was great. I echo, uh, Dr. Joyner's words about the, uh. Quality of the presentations and the programming and the work that's being done. It was especially good to hear. Um, the teacher's voice in the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, as was appropriate. As we're talking about the educators thriving and the silence pilot. One of the fun things about the silence pilot is, I think, two of the teachers that, um, presented were first-year teachers. And so I thought that that was really great of, as we're looking at the piloting science, um, curriculum. That, um, not only the, the real experienced teachers there, but also some of the, the very, are, some of our newest teachers. That are, they're very able to take a look at it and, and talk about it from two different skill sets and two different, uh. You know, needs in terms of people as they manage their classroom and how the, the science curriculum will, will work. So I thought that that was great and really appreciated hearing from folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll move on to Facilities Naming Committee Report. Dr. Joyner? Ready to go. Dr. Joyner?
Yes, I, I just, I stepped off for a minute, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Facilities, uh, facilities naming, do you want to come back to you?
Uh, actually, we've done what we, we set out to do with facilities naming. And, and I appreciate the work of every single board member and getting that done. I also acc- appreciate the persistence of, uh, Katura Bryant, um, who has been pressing us. To try to modify the policy to include, uh, naming parts of buildings. And we didn't consider that initially when we developed the policy, but that's the nature of good policy. Uh, as we know more, we do, do we do more and we do better. So thank you so much for that. Uh, can't say enough of that, about that.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any questions or comments for Dr. Joyner? Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Tracy?
No report at this time, I don't think.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Tracy. Um, I already gave my president's report, Head Start Report. Mr. Wilcox?
Uh, briefly, we did meet, uh, the Head Start Group did meet on, uh, it was last Thursday, January nineteenth. Me- meeting materials are posted. Uh, we had a good conversation. Uh, slots are still available, uh, in our Head Start Program, but, um, enrollment's looking pretty nicely. We've also, uh, heard, uh, confirmation from our Head Start Director. That, um, facilities folks are moving forward on some of the enhancements in some of the learning spaces, which is great. And greatly appreciated because there's some time limits on the funding that's behind some of those improvements. So, thanks to, um, Mr. Lamb and, and the other folks that are involved in that to keep those things on track. Um, that's the Head Start Report.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Citywide School Building Committee Report?
So for that one, we met on, I think it was January twelfth. Um, the Project Management Stewardship Report is posted, which was primarily what we did in that meeting. Was, was, uh, we had staff walk us through that, um, listening to our fellow, uh. Board member, um, student board member, Dan, uh, Mr. Cruz Bustamante. Um, it's been a while since we've taken a look at a work order report, so I'll be requesting that we take a look at that at the next one. And add it to the stewardship, just to kind of get a sense of where work orders are. In the past, when we looked at that, we were able to see, you know, how fast things are being resolved. Um, I do know that for some things, it's been reported, still a lot of lead times in terms of getting some of the equipment. Or parts needed to fix some of these things. Um, but then, uh, s- sometimes I imagine the communication back to the buildings is to status reports. As to, um, where things are, um, might be, um, better. Uh, it's also challenging because my, my understanding is when they're re- working with the school leadership. The, the message might not be getting out to all the faculty in the, in the school and the students and the other staff. So, so I think some of the communication issues are internal to the buildings and not, um, between facilities team. And, um, and the schools, but I will certainly take a look at the, um, work order report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox, and Finance and Operations.
Again, briefly, uh, minutes, uh, were posted, uh, and they're in the board packet, as you see, if you've taken a look at it. The work on the Series Three Thousand Policies continue, and we anticipated our next moving. At our next meeting, moving some of those policies over to governance. Um, I'd like to thank folks that have been taking a look at that, both on the committee and, um, in the administration. Um, we also had what I thought was an excellent update, um, from folks involved in the staffing guidelines. Uh, updating the staffing guidelines in answer to the board's question about what's the gap in terms of. Where do we need more staff? What type of staff do we need? How many social workers do we have? How many do we need to meet the need? We had a great report. Uh, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Red Hannens brought in, uh, some of the union leadership. From various unions that are working with her, so thanks to, if my notes are correct, it was Ms. Garcia, Ms. Williams, and Mr. DeLucia. From the, um, administrators, the parry union, and the teachers' union talked. It was a great little bit of conversation, and it sounds like things are moving forward to that, so thanks to everyone on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Thanks. Seeing no discussion, we'll move on to Governance Report. Dr. Benitez? She on?
She had to drop off.
Okay.
But, but her, much of what she wanted to report was in the deliberation around the policy changes.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Um, Food Service Task Group Report. Dr. Yarborough?
Yes, um, and it looks like I stand between us continuing us a journey. So, I'll take my report from thirty minutes to fifteen minutes. Um, but, no, uh, we, we, we met, um, on January eleventh. And the minutes will be made available. I'm very appreciative of the leadership of Ms. Gail Shari. And also our community partners in food services. Um, the job is posted for Food Director. Um, and, uh, the District Food Services is also, um, working with, uh, La Tha Swami. Um, and, uh, we received, uh. Where's my actual note? Uh, an agreement for good food purchasing, so that we can better understand what our opportunities are around sustainability and climate. And our impact, um, and also buying locally. So I appreciate the work there. Uh, and lastly, I'll mention that, uh, we have a food gap subgroup. Uh, comprised of our district and our community leaders, uh, and they did distribute food. Uh, and partnered with families on, uh, December twenty-seventh, uh, near the time of our break. Um, and what I most appreciate about their work is that even when they have success, they review what they've done. Where they could do something better, uh, and then they get to it. So I really appreciate, uh, their ongoing leadership. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough. Any questions or comments for Dr. Yarborough? Okay, seeing none, I'm entertaining motion to adjourn.
So. Second.
Dr. Joyner moved it. Dr. Yarborough seconded. Um, Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Yarborough?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez gone. Mr. Goldson?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz Bustamante's gone. Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.